Okay, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners' public hearing. The Board of Commissioners will consider transmittal of the amendments to the future land use element, livable communities element of the future Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan to the State Land Planning Agency and other agencies for review tonight. We have five commissioners present here at the dais, and we have two commissioners appearing virtually, one telephonically, I think. So if we could do a roll call.
Chair Kim?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thank you, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And with that, tonight, the Board will also hear the first public hearing on a land development code amendment, which is related to the comprehensive plan amendments. And at the conclusion of the hearing, the Board will take a vote regarding the transmittal of the plan amendments. If the Board votes to transmit the amendments, the amendments will come back to the Board for a final hearing for adoption. No action will be required on the land development code amendment this evening. Action will be taken on the code amendment at the final hearing. And with that, I think after last week's hearing, we have our sleeves rolled up. I will recognize Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission, who will provide an introduction to tonight's meeting.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much, Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Hillsborough County Planning Commission. We are here tonight after you have given us some additional time to work with the Wy Mama community on the package of plan amendments and land development code amendments that are before you. We greatly appreciate the extended time and the ability that we had over the last few months to meet in person with the community and feel like that's led to some very, had very productive conversations and led to some very positive recommendations that are before you tonight. Just to remind you all of where we are in the process, this, as you mentioned, is the transmittal hearing, the adoption of the plan amendments and the land development code, of which this is the first of two hearings, would be in October. And that timing is necessitated by requirements in the statute for allowing an appeal period after the adoption of comprehensive plan amendments, and us wanting to make sure that that has time to go through and the amendments be effective before the moratorium ends at the end of the calendar year. With that, I'm going to turn it right over to Taryn Sabia and Jay Collins, who have a consolidated presentation on all of the amendments to share with you tonight. Thank you.
If someone is trying to speak, please remember to unmute their mic when speaking. Thank you.
We can't hear anything in the boardroom. We see the map, it's all up there.
Excuse me, Melissa, is Taryn supposed to be presenting this?
Yes.
Okay, Taryn, can you hear us?
I can. Good evening, everyone.
Okay. We can hear you now.
Perfect, okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm going to go ahead and give the presentation on the Wy Mama Community Plan update for the transmittal hearing. And to remind everyone with what we were tasked in looking at, the livable communities element and future land use elements, the downtown overlay land development code, the WVR2, the Wy Mama Village Residential 2 policy update, and the land development code, and the downtown strategic action plan. To give everyone a sense of where each of these plans fits in, looking at land use, we'll be looking at the comprehensive plan. In terms of community goals, the livable communities element, the community plan, the future land use element. And for the land development code, there are two, the Wy Mama Downtown Overlay and the Wy Mama Village Residential 2. There are two non-adopted policy documents as well. They include the Wy Mama Urban Design Plan and the Downtown Strategic Action Plan. We focused on four guiding principles throughout the planning process. They included health, equity, resilience, and sustainability. And through the research and talking with the community through a number of different engagement sessions, we determined that there were three areas of critical needs: health, housing, and opportunity. Key policies, and this is a bit of the update since last February, include the updated community plan goals. We provided new and additional strategies, which we'll go through this evening. There's no additional land designated for the WVR2. We are retaining existing densities and intensities within the category, the expansion of the transfer of development rights to establish the Wy Mama Downtown as a designated receiving area within the urban service boundary, replacing the employment and service requirements with community benefits requirements that provide community benefits and services to support the needs of the community, improve infrastructure, and enhance economic opportunity, expansion of open space requirements to include specific percentages standards for open space, conservation areas, and agricultural land, and new residential development standards including housing types and street network design in the land development code for downtown Wy Mama and the WVR2. Our community outreach timeline, we kicked this project off back in March of 2020. We held a three-day community charrette. We were in the Wy Mama community just before the shutdown. We continued throughout that time with community surveys, virtual work sessions, presentations to Planning Commission, the Board of County Commissioners. Meetings with the community were held in August. We did both virtual and in-person open houses, as well as public workshops and hearings. This past spring, we continued our engagement effort with five workshops in the community. We looked at five different topics. So the first was the livable communities element, the downtown plan and overlay, the Wy Mama Village Residential 2, community benefits and infrastructure, the WVR2 LDC neighborhood design and affordable housing, and then the community open house, where we put all of it together. So the following is going to highlight policy changes and refinements in response to the community input through the extended engagement period and the activities over the past several months. So first is Hillsborough County, the Comprehensive Plan text amendment, HC CPA 20-12. And we're going to be looking at the livable communities goals. So these goals are prioritized based on that community input, and they are in a different order than the original livable communities element from the original community plan done in 2007. So up at the top was infrastructure and public realm, followed by education, Wy Mama Downtown Plan and Development, business and economic development, affordable housing and neighborhoods, multimodal transportation and connectivity, parks, recreation, and conservation, health, wellness, and safety, and the Wy Mama Village Residential 2, the WVR2. And to give you an example of what some of these look like, in addition to prioritizing the goal headings themselves, we also prioritize the elements or the bullets that are listed under each goal. So under infrastructure and public realm, enhance Wy Mama's public realm and improve infrastructure. The top three bullets that were identified by the community were to expand sewer and water for commercial development in downtown Wy Mama, create an infrastructure prioritization plan for Wy Mama's downtown, and the expansion of internet access through infrastructure. In the community plan, we developed a community-wide approach, and this urban design framework was utilized for both downtown Wy Mama and the Wy Mama Village Residential 2 area, so that we could look at the Wy Mama community as a whole, and that there would be relationship between the downtown and the WVR2. So the four categories for the urban design framework are mobility, form and character, environment and open space, cultural capital and community. And again, we really wanted to focus on that continuity between neighborhoods in Wy Mama, and you can see this through the downtown overlay, which is part 3.23, and also the WVR2 land development code, which is part 3.24. So they share similar design features, including street cross-sections and lot types. These were developed to create a pedestrian-friendly community with a distinct character, and again, to have that relationship that is shared between the two areas within the entire Wy Mama village. So to give everyone an idea of what the mobility items are that fall into the plan, we're looking at connected streets, street grids and blocks, and the Wy Mama Trail and connected bike network. The Wy Mama Trail also has a community benefit option that is part of, for the WVR2, and that trail is a significant piece. We heard a lot from the community about the trails and the bike networks, and really wanting to see bicycle infrastructure as a true mobility option for the community, and something that could help connect downtown to the WVR2 and vice versa. So if somebody were living in downtown, but perhaps working or looking to go to activities in the WVR2, they could access it via the trail. And if someone were living in the WVR2 and wanting to access downtown, either for amenities or jobs, they would be able to also use the trail. Our second framework element was forming character, and you can see we're looking at the natural and green landscapes, agri-hoods, the street room, so that space in the street from facade to facade, from building to building, the variety of housing types, and a variety of building types. And as we look at forming character, the natural and green landscape, we also have a community benefit option related to that in the form of the lead neighborhoods designation. Some of the value within that includes looking at what those types of green neighborhoods provide or promote, promoting things like water conservation, Florida-friendly landscaping, skilled labor through green jobs industries, energy conservation, and reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. And we'll talk a little further about housing and building types. Environment and open space is our next one, conservation of wetlands, parks and recreation fields, constructed wetlands and low-impact design, agriculture and trails. And again, we see the trails again connecting to those open spaces, and we also have a community benefit option related to county's ELAP program and land designation for that. Cultural capital and community. Wy Mama has a lot in terms of existing organizations, which really help make up that cultural capital, and this was seen as a way to be able to help continue a number of those efforts. So this concludes neighborhood support uses such as daycare centers or childcare centers. Other support uses could be assisted living facilities. It could also be park areas and other recreation spaces. It is not intended for commercial use. Commercial use is intended to be in downtown Wy Mama, so these are strictly support uses. Neighborhood schools, community parks, and recreation fields. Next, we're going to look at text amendment HC CPA 20-13. This is Wy Mama Village Residential 2. So the shaded area is the Wy Mama Village Residential 2, and again, this is not been, the boundary is not being expanded. The Wy Mama Village Residential 2 future land use category is located inside the boundaries of the Wy Mama Village Plan. It generally conforms to those properties previously classified as the residential Plan 2. So what is the WVR2? It is a land use category, and the boundary of the area was established during the 1990s. The future land use element is part of the county's comprehensive plan and its intention. In order to avoid a pattern of development that could contribute to urban sprawl, it is the intent of this category to designate Wy Mama Village Residential 2 areas inside the boundaries of the Wy Mama Village Plan, that are suited for current agricultural uses, but may be suitable for the expansion of the village as described in this plan. The category allows two dwelling units per acre in certain criteria are met. Policy 48.1, development intent. Development within the WVR2 is intended to do the following: prioritize the timeliness of appropriate land use zoning, growth, and development within the rural service area; provide for compatible transition of land use between the rural and urban service areas; preserve the rural character, encourage opportunities for continued agriculture; offset biological and ecological impacts of new development; maintain surface water quality and improve where possible; and provide an interconnected system of native habitat preserves, greenways, parks, and open space. Provide multimodal mobility options and connectiveness that reduces the impacts of new single occupancy vehicle trips. Encourage and support non-residential uses within downtown Wy Mama along and in the proximity of State Road 674. Create efficiency in planning and in the provision of infrastructure. Balance housing with workplaces, jobs, retail, and civic uses. And provide a variety of housing types to support residents of diverse ages, incomes, family sizes, and lifestyles. So what are the criteria to develop two units, excuse me, two dwelling units per gross acre in the Wy Mama Village Residential 2? The idea is to create policy which helps to support those community goals. Again, we want to make sure that we are representing those community goals throughout the policy. So cluster housing at four dwelling units per acre to preserve open space. Maintain 40% of the entire site as open space. 30% must be adjoining, and 10% must be internally located to the development. This can be in the form of small parks and trails. The plan must demonstrate connection to internal and neighboring open space or conservation areas to enhance and protect corridors or linkages that maintain a contiguous network of wildlife habitat, and to meet the required community benefits. It is the goal of Hillsborough County to maximize and prioritize the timeliness of appropriate land use zoning, growth, and development within the urban service area prior to the utilization of land use zoning, growth, and development in the rural service area. So this will cover a range of topics to ensure that development is properly timed for the RSA, including capital improvement costs, rural services, mobility planning, the provision of connectivity to roadway networks, wildlife corridors, agriculture, school sites, and timeliness indicators. The Wy Mama Village Residential 2 has important infrastructure components that have been talked about in a number of different sessions with the community, and looking at the new development and redevelopment must accommodate future street networks through grid-like patterns as represented in the plans. So looking at streets, bicycle networks, and trails that all connect throughout Wy Mama, and connecting within the WVR2, but also to the downtown area. These are key neighborhood elements that the community has prioritized. They, in this list, include schools, a mix of housing types, a farming co-op, neighborhood parks, support uses, conservation areas, community gardens, recreation fields, agri-hoods, and low-impact development. What are we doing for jobs? So the current jobs requirement does not necessarily provide jobs. As an alternative to the current jobs requirement, the community benefit options are being recommended. And the community benefit options, which are community-wide, have the ability to bring infrastructure, commercial development, employment, community amenities, housing options, and more. So this list below helps to explain what some of them might be, including new school locations, community support uses in the neighborhoods. Again, this is not intended for commercial use, increased density in downtown, commercial development in the downtown, and the encouragement of agri-hoods. Community benefits and services support the needs of the community within the WVR2 and the entire Wy Mama community. So to support community needs, options are available through the plan development process. New development shall include community benefits requirements to provide services to residents, which can be supported onsite or offsite. And a new development of 50 or more units shall meet with the school district, the county, and hold a meeting with the community prior to the application. And again, just to emphasize, the shifting away from that employment requirement to the community benefit options, which are looking at land dedication, infrastructure, a diversity of housing types, mobility, and the preservation of open space. And so these options, as you see under these key five headings, again, tie back to those livable communities elements and those community goals. And to encourage public benefits, projects may receive a density increase above the one unit per five acres, unless otherwise specified by existing zoning, up to the two units per gross acre. So it is a scale and chart, so less than 25 acres, and there would be one benefit required. If we're looking at 100 to 160 acres, four benefits would be required, and greater than 320 acres, six benefits would be required. So the larger the acreage, the more benefits that would be required. And to give an example of some of the benefits, a developer would construct new commercial development in the downtown Main Street Core or downtown East as a potential benefit. An example of another benefit is that the benefit will make a contribution towards the furthering of a defined goal within the Wy Mama Community Plan, livable communities element. The benefit may include economic development, transit, internet access, or other contributions such as affordable housing. So these are all elements that are mentioned, again, within that livable communities element and goals, and so this is intended to be able to be flexible and work with the community. Expanding the WVR2 options to support community needs, encourage trip capture, and generate employment opportunities. So 100 acres or greater projects shall dedicate a minimum of 1.5% of the project acreage to a neighborhood center, so public recreational live-work or residential support uses. And what this really means is, a neighborhood center is a place where we would see different amenities come together, so co-locating things like parks and schools, recreational areas, and to be able to, you know, create a center within the neighborhood that is easily accessed, not only by the residents living within that neighborhood, but also throughout the Wy Mama community. Residential support uses are encouraged. 100 acres or greater projects may use up to three acres for these uses and retain the residential density. Downtown East supports consideration of non-residential uses along and in proximity to 674. And the downtown East is adjacent to Wy Mama's downtown, which is why it is considered for those commercial uses, and those commercial uses are currently allowed. So the Hillsborough County Land Development Code Amendment 21-0289. The Wy Mama Downtown Overlay. This is the map of the overlay here. The large shaded area is the boundary shaded for the downtown. The dark area that is shaded within it is the designated receiving zone. The backwards L shape is our Main Street Core, and then over to the right in the dash area, this is the downtown East. So the original Wy Mama Community Plan established the goal for creating an overlay in downtown, and the overlay district sets the design standards to implement the vision, principles, and strategies of the Wy Mama Community Plan. And these are some of the key components that were identified by the community as being important standards for the downtown area, and these are items that they prioritize through the engagement process. So provide for beautification, Florida-friendly landscaping along all main thoroughfares in Wy Mama's downtown as part of green infrastructure design, construct sidewalks in existing neighborhoods with priority given to neighborhoods closest to schools, and implement the bicycle network and the Wy Mama Greenway Trail as a main transportation mode. Applicability of the overlay. So for commercial buildings, structures that are expanded to between 25 and 50% of the existing legally permitted square footage within the parcel, the landscaping and signage requirements of the overlay would apply. For structures that are expanded to beyond 50% of the existing legally permitted square footage within the parcel, the landscaping, screening, signage, and building design requirements of the overlay would apply. And for new structures constructed on a vacant parcel or where a primary structure is replaced with a new structure, the entire requirements of the overlay would apply for the entire project and parcel. Applicability of the overlay for existing residential, single-family, or mobile home. The applicability for existing single-family properties provides for replacement of a home due to a catastrophic event or if they choose to rebuild their home. And for these reasons, the overlay is voluntary. The expansion of mobile homes through a rezoning within the Main Street District is prohibited. An existing mobile home density within the Main Street District is grandfathered, and replacement within the district is allowed. So as we look at this applicability section, it will be modified to incorporate HB 401, the new state law regarding residential design standards. Local governments shall not impose certain standards on single-family and two-family houses. These standards shall be voluntary under the proposed overlay. So if a property is rezoned or density is increased, applicable sections of the overlay shall apply. And we have a schematic development plan to give an example of what a development in Wy Mama's downtown could look like under this overlay. Each of the buildings that you see here have a 10,000-square-foot footprint at the ground level. They are designed to be able to reflect the mixed-use building as well as a residential apartment building that could be on a shared block. apartment building that could be on a shared block. Affordable housing is something that was also important to the community. It is Goal Number Five within Livable Communities element. Affordable housing can be built in the urban service area and the rural service area. There is a density bonus for the urban service area and an additional incentive in the transfer of development rights, the TDR, receiving zone, where the affordable housing bonus and TDR may be stacked. So, again, that's in that dark shaded area and in the portion of downtown, and that's where the stacking would be allowed. And we wanted to reemphasize the continuity between neighborhoods in Wyoma, and again, between that downtown and the WVR2. Through the street cross-sections and the establishment of gridded neighborhoods, as well as the different housing and lot types that you'll see throughout the land development codes. So, there's a proposed minimum mixture of four different lot types within the WVR2, clustered closest to the urban service boundary. And there is a community benefit option for additional lot types. The importance of the additional lot types is that it provides an opportunity for apartments and live-work units and townhouses to be built within the WVR2. Again, relating back to that goal for affordable housing, but also for a diversity of housing types. So, and that's really what the WVR2 housing types are focused on, creating a diversity of options in a more inclusive neighborhood to be able to provide, hopefully, different price points and ranges in housing throughout the community. For the WVR2 LDC, all single-family uses and lots less than 500 square feet or under 50 feet of width shall be reloaded. The accessory dwelling units do not count towards the gross density, and the residential design for porches and setbacks for front-loading garages. And we also have an example of what a schematic development plan for the WVR2 could look like. It includes a mix of those housing types. This plan is specifically showing a mix of six different housing types, neighborhood support use, a school site is worked in here, an agrihood development, the preservation of wetland areas. And so, it's also showing that connected street grid and the potential for a greenway or trail. And I'm now going to turn it over to Mr. Jay Collins for the consistency review.
Thank you, Ms. Xavier. Again, Jay Collins with Planning Commission staff. I'm just going to go over a quick consistency finding from the July 19 Planning Commission public hearing. So, this will be the consistency finding for the two amendments that are to be transmitted, if the board sees so, tonight to the Department of Economic Opportunity. They are HCCPA 2012 and HCCPA 2013, as well as the first public hearing for the Land Development Code 21-0289. Next slide, please, Taryn. For CPA 2012, the Planning Commission deliberated on a number of future land use element policies. Those include Policy 4.1 for rural area densities, Policy 4.3 specific to WVR2 in the rural service area, Policy 4.6 rural area, excuse me, rural levels of service, Objective 14, dealing with open space, as well as Objective 16 for neighborhood protection. Next slide, please. CPA 2013's consistency looked at the community design components of the future land use element, including Goal 7, looking at existing rural uses, as well as Goal 20 of the Livable Communities element, Policy 20.7.1, specific to LDC implementation, and Livable Communities element for the Wyoma Community Plan, specifically Goal Number One, which is the establishment of the WVR2 land use category. Next slide, please. The code consistency, LDC 21-0289, looked at a number of future land use policies and objectives, including Objective 9, consistency with the comprehensive plan. Again, all LDC amendments shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Goal 14 looks at development in rural areas. Goal 20, the livable communities consideration, as well, again, as Policy 20.7.1 with the LDC to implement that element. Next slide, please. Continuing that, looking at the livable communities element for Wyoma's Community Plan, Goal 3 talks of Wyoma's downtown development. So, again, the LDC looks to implement the Wyoma Community Plan through the creation of LDCs for the downtown as well as for the WVR2. Next slide, please. The structure of tonight's public hearing, again, are the two land, or excuse me, are the two amendments to be transmitted to DEO, being HCCPA 2012 and HCPA 2013, as well as consideration for the code amendment. And with that, the Planning Commission found the amendments consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for Unincorporated Hillsborough County. And we afforded this recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners with this presentation. Next slide, please. Before we continue any further, we did want to bring this up on behalf of Commissioner Smith. And please don't worry, don't squint at this, there is another slide. So, we wanted to show this entire slide first. This is actually some work between Commissioner Smith's office, Planning Commission's office, Development Services Office, as well as the County Attorney's Office, to look at the timeliness policies that we have currently proposed for Wyoma against the timeliness policies for RP2. So, as you can see here, the first three bullets of the two policies are exactly the same. And those talk of the timeliness of compatibility for the development, for meeting all land development code and policies of the various plans, as well as making sure that you are environmentally sound with your development. What is different between the two is in RP2, there's also a timeliness that looks at a mixture of uses and its timeliness for either a mixture of uses within RP2 or a mixture of uses that are within two miles of RP2. And so, we worked with the Commissioner's office to do that exact thing, hopefully, for Wyoma. Next slide, please. And that specific language, that if the Commissioner should bring it up, is under Policy 48A14 with the timeliness indicators. And for those who may be on a phone or cannot see this, I'm going to go ahead and read it off for you. That fourth bullet would say, and I quote, "The project does not achieve internal trip capture either through the construction of onsite mix of uses or by being located within a two-mile walking or driving distance of the segment of 674 that is within the Wyoma Village downtown and in the urban service area, or some combination thereof, that ensures the provision of internal trip capture in the Wyoma Village." The asterisk to that would be, "A project that provides the commercial or office development fronting State Road 674 within the Wyoma Village downtown or within the Wyoma Main Street Core District through construction, land dedication, or infrastructure development shall not be considered premature on the basis of not achieving internal trip capture." So, it basically says, if you can provide a mixture of uses onsite in your neighborhood center, that may be considered. Or, you have the ability to provide a mixture of uses along 674, such as in the Main Street Core or in the downtown area, again, through construction, land dedication, or infrastructure development. Next slide, please. With that, that concludes our presentation tonight, and we are available for any questions. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. And with that, we will now open the public hearing on the amendment to the future land use element and community plan update, as well as related amendments to the land development code. We have not a too-long list, just as if last week, it's a little bit longer than last week, but not significantly longer. So, I'm just, if the board, if it's board's pleasure, we could do, because we have, again, both A and B, and just combine it with four minutes a speaker, if everyone feels okay with that, which is what we did before. Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner White. If we can do a roll call vote.
Chair Kim.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan. Myers.
Yes.
Overman.
All right, we can barely hear the clerk here, but oh, here.
Thank you. Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And for audio reasons, Hagan?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. And Commissioner Smith, I see that you had requested to speak. Is that, do you still? Okay. And with that, we'll begin public comment. The first person signed to speak, and it's four minutes per person, is Pamela Gomez. Do we have Ms. Gomez on the line, or?
Madam Chair, we're checking that right now. Pamela, if you can turn down the volume of your television, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Yes, I'm waiving my time for Liz Gutierrez.
Okay, you're giving your time to someone else, you said?
Yes.
You're waving your time, okay. I'll go to the next speaker, Gil Martinez.
Gil, this is one of the communication speakers. Okay.
Good afternoon. I will be yielding my time to Liz Gutierrez of Enterprise in Latinas.
Okay, that's two yields, I think. The first one was a yield of time. And the third speaker I have listed is Wanda Broughton.
Yes, I'm here. And my comments had to do with just learning that the goals have been-
Yes, I will be yielding my time to Liz Gutierrez.
Okay, one second. We had two people speaking just then. I think Ms. Broughton started out speaking, is that true?
Yes, I was speaking. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. If we could just start the clock for her again, it's just a few seconds off, but go ahead.
Okay, well, my comments were just about, just now learning that the goals, our goals have been reraced.
Can you hold on one second?
Here in the 11th hour.
Ms. Broughton?
Yeah.
I think there's just, can we turn down whatever the other interference is, whatever that is? Is, we can hear someone else speaking.
Ms. Broughton, if you are, if you are listening to the television, you have to mute your television or your computer.
We're in the middle of a lightning storm, that could be it. I have, there's nothing, I have no power here.
Oh, okay. Well, okay, you go ahead. Go ahead, we can hear you.
Okay, our power just, our power just went out. Okay, so, what I was saying was that, you know, we're at the very end, we're in the 11th hour, basically, and that, and every one of our existing community plan goals have been unexpectedly reprioritized. I mean, possibly, or even presumably, you know, by last-minute outreach efforts, but I'm having trouble understanding why our long-established goals, why would they be changed in priority status so close to the end of the process? I mean, was it by people that were just joining in the process? Because it's been a really long time since the Wyoma residents themselves had a hands-on workshop. You know, COVID aside, with the limited capacity and mask mandates and whatnot, it's been many months between the time that we had that first sit-down planning workshop and now. That roundtable workshop meeting, that charrette that we had was in March 2020. So, when you work on a plan for so many months, wouldn't something like the priority, the goals really bubble up to the top sooner? I mean, it really should, and it would if you were talking and meeting with the residents on an ongoing basis, and not just at the very end, when all the planning work has already been done, and possibly by a new group of people that are just coming into the process that, you know, are making repriorities for things that people who started in the process early on thought were all set. So, it's now we've got a complete 180. I mean, for example, the WVR2, I mean, it's been pushed all the way down and rated to the very last goal, and I haven't seen anybody asking about this. I mean, how can it be that the WVR2 land use category, that's what started all of the discussion on the zoning cases and got us the moratorium, but now it's placed at the end? I mean, even the planning staff had a hard time explaining why such a hot potato issue by so many email complaints over so many months is now pushed to the very bottom and considered the lowest and last priority? I mean, it doesn't make sense. How could that even happen? I just think we need to take a step back, and we need to look at this and don't sweep it away. I think it's a really big deal, and that, you know, it just can't be explained away. So, I think we need to delay this from going forward now and investigate how, at the 11th hour, so much of the plan could suddenly change in the opposite direction. So, those are my comments about the last-minute reprioritizing the goals and my comments on the LDC. So, thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, Riley Proctor.
Riley Proctor has not called in.
Okay. We next come to Liz Gutierrez. And I think so far, you have 12 minutes.
Oh, I won't need that much. Good afternoon, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Liz Gutierrez. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Very good. I'm Liz Gutierrez, I'm the CEO of Enterprise in Latina, and speaking on behalf of our organization, our collaborators, including the Wyoma Community Development Corporation, residents of the community, and stakeholders. Thank you, Commissioner Overman, for making special accommodations here at the South Shore Library, where there are over 20 people gathered, so that members of the Wyoma community could participate more fully in this public hearing and provide our perspective on the WVR2 Wyoma Village Plan update. As many of you know, in January 2019, Enterprise in Latina, then the Wyoma CDC, Wyoma Development, Community Development Corporation, began a community campaign to advocate for equitable development in Wyoma. The campaign called for an update for the 2007 Wyoma Neighborhood Plan, and specifically the revitalization of Wyoma's downtown. We're super excited that the community planning part of the process is now complete and ready for your consideration and adoption. With your permission, I will speak for no more than a few minutes beyond my time, as two members of our team have relinquished their time to me. And so, with your permission, I'd like to make my comments. I will, of course, speak on behalf of our organization, Enterprise in Latina, the Wyoma Community Development Corporation, as well as countless residents that support the plan, including the 110 residents that signed our petition, and the many more residents and leaders that have gathered here today, and those that are participating remotely. So, for the record, my comments tonight refer to the WVR2 Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And we want to state for the record our support for the updated WVR2 plan, and we ask that you consider its adoption with a few modifications that we believe make the plan a real tool to guide the growth and development of Wyoma for years to come. As we stated for the record in our written memo to you dated August 11, the proposed community benefit program, as we call it, or options, is designed to replace the jobs requirement in the 2007 plan. However, we find that the benefit program or options as proposed is loosely aligned with the goals established in the neighborhood plan and fail to advance set goals strategically. In addition, the community benefits included in the program are, in some cases, concurrency requirements for the approval of new development, while others don't really provide a public benefit. In the interest of time, I will not review all 13 community benefit items. You will be able to see that in our memo, but instead, I'd like to provide highlights of the changes we- we respectfully submit to you for consideration. We suggest that, for example, that community benefits 10 and 13, established in Tier Two of the community benefit options, be moved to Tier One. We also suggest that community benefits in Tier One, including benefits 1, 2, 3, and 5, be removed from the list of community benefits for the reasons stated in our memo to you. And community benefits in Tier Two, including community benefit 9 and 11, be removed from the list, again, for the same reason we have explained to you in our memo. In addition, we strongly recommend that the Board of County Commissioners review the entirety of the community benefits program to ensure it's strategic alignment with the Wyomama Village Neighborhood Plan goals. Further, we ask that this board support the creation of the Wyomama Community Plan Task Force and its funding. The task force would function as an agent to guarantee the plan's activation, implementation, accountability, and equitable, public-private financial investment in the community redevelopment process. The task force will work to extract substantive benefits for downtown redevelopment opportunities based on the community benefits requirements proposed. We strongly recommend that the task force be adopted as part of the Wyomama Village Plan update in the strategic documents we're transmitted and institutionalized as a body that serves Wyomama to ensure that the community benefits are true to the community's needs. In closing, I want to thank you all for supporting our quest for the update to the Wyomama 2007 Neighborhood Plan, because from, many of you have been with us from the very beginning, and we thank you also for directing the planning commission to implement our community planning process. We believe that the updated plan speaks to the priorities of the community and provides a sufficient regulatory framework to ensure that Wyomama grows in such a way that everyone can benefit from a safe, healthy, and prosperous community and environment. We thank the planning commission team and its consultants who worked diligently to mitigate many competing and sometimes conflicting priorities among many stakeholders in this process. We acknowledge the change, the challenge that this process has presented to all of us. We also want to thank the Wyomama residents, hundreds of them, that over two years kept coming to community meetings, even though, in some cases, language and technology got in the way. We stand here feeling really proud of the response of our community, and we celebrate their efforts. We are grateful for your consideration of these recommendations, and we thank you for your time.
Is that the conclusion? Thank you, thank you. And I may have missed a name before this that I thought I had, but Jessica Eiserman?
This is Jessica Eiserman. My address is 401 East Jackson Street, Suite 2100. I represent Eisenhower Property Group, which has significant land holdings in the WVR2 area. And my comments apply to all the Wyomama items before you tonight, so I appreciate you combining public comments. We have been involved in the WVR2 update since the beginning, and we have connected with the Wyomama Now Group, the Enterprising Latina Group, and others to hear the community's goal. While the plan is not perfect, staff has done an outstanding job to find that common ground that works for most people. You might hear some people request changes tonight, but please remember to not allow perfect stand in the way of good. We have been in a moratorium for almost two years, and we are ready to move forward. These updates before you are better than what exists today. The job requirement is simply not workable. We cannot regulate jobs into existence. Instead, business growth and jobs come with rooftops, with infrastructure improvements, and that's what these changes would bring. Tonight, you've heard several people speak in support, and so I hope you approve the plan as it exists and with the understanding that we can make tweaks down the road to make it work for all. But, as I said, we've been in a moratorium for two years almost, so we're ready to kind of hit the ground running and see how this new plan works in the Wyomama community. I want to thank staff for their incredible community outreach on this matter, and Enterprising Latinas and Wyomama Now have done a great job reaching out to the community to get the voices of those who otherwise not be heard. Thank you again for your consideration, Commissioners.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Holly Jamison.
My name is Holly Jamison. I'm a six-year resident of Wyomama and vice president of the Wyomama Community Development Corporation. I joined our Wyomama community almost two years ago to update the 2007 Wyomama Village Plan. That process has been gratifying, because together we have created an updated plan that reflects our needs, concerns, and hopes for our Wyomama. You, as the B O T C, have the opportunity to address those needs, concerns, and hopes tonight. You have the opportunity to change people's lives, and you can be the B O T C who is visionary. Your decision will have an impact for years and generations. Your decision will create the opportunity for reasonable growth rather than urban sprawl. The Wyomama community has spoken loudly about the lack of infrastructure, community benefits that really benefit the residents of downtown that attract both business and economic growth. They have spoken loudly to see WVR2 rural. They've spoken to create a plan that has real benefits for the community. To be clear, these are not just ones that she sees as serious needs. Is it unreasonable to demand broadband and sewers far downtown? No. Is it unreasonable to want streetlights and sidewalks so the community can feel safe walking through the wonderful new, well-lit soccer field? No, I think not. And after you have approved the plan, we are committed to making the plan happen with the creation of the Wyomama Community Action Plan Task Force, which the planning commission unanimously supported. We all know the Wyomama Village Plan is not perfect, but it is good in many ways. Our community has put much time and thought into the update that truly reflects our history, culture, and needs of our residents. We know the community benefits need to be seriously considered to be sure they truly do benefit all residents of Wyomama. Wyomama's future is now in your hands. We may never ever have this amazing opportunity again to create a future for a thriving Wyomama. Be the visionary B O T C that you have shown yourself to be. You will long be remembered for your decision, and Wyomama will profit. Thank you so much.
Okay, and I'm trying to skip through some of the ones that were already in the second list. Misha Robson.
Yes, this is Misha Robson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, County Commissioners and community members that are gathered here tonight. My name is Misha Robson, and I'm here representing Central Florida Jobs with Justice. We're a nonprofit organization that supports the community of Wyomama and all of its residents. Jobs with Justice believes that all individuals should be able to meet their basic needs of good-paying jobs, affordable housing, adequate food, and health care in the community where they live. With over a quarter of the residents of Wyomama currently living below the poverty level, it is clear that there is a need for development that is truly equitable for all residents, not simply good enough for now. I'm voicing my conditional support for the adoption of the Wyomama Neighborhood Plan. Central Florida Jobs with Justice would like to see the conditions and recommendations made by Wyomama Community Development Corporation and Enterprising Latinas adopted. Those recommendations are very simply stated: to make changes to the proposed community benefits list so that it strategically articulates and aligns to guarantee the community-wide benefits identified in the plan update, and to acknowledge and recognize the Wyomama Community Action Plan Task Force and its funding. Thank you for your time this evening. This concludes my comments.
Thank you. And I believe the last speaker, no, I'm sorry, Zelvus Aplin? Is Zelvin?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you so much. My name is Zelvus Aplin, and I am a resident of the Wyomama community and also the lead pastor at South Hills Church, which is in the Wyomama community as well. And I'm happy that we are making progress in our community. When I first moved to Wyomama, it looked like a very depressed area, and I'm glad that we are no longer going to be considered the forgotten corner of Hillsborough County, but there is focus and attention being brought our direction, and I am excited to throw my conditional support behind the improved Wyomama Plan, as it's been updated and presented before this Board of County Commissioners. And I also throw my conditional support with the hope that we will put together a task force that will make sure that the implementation of the community benefits will be timely, will be accurate, and will reflect what the residents and the business owners in the community want to see. Again, we thank you guys for your attention and your focus on our part of Hillsborough County, as we are looking forward to being a thriving and striving community that welcomes all people to be a part of our wonderful family out here in Wyomama. Thank you so much for your time and your attention.
Thank you. And lastly, Santos Morales.
Madam Chair, Santos Morales was on the line but has hung up now.
Oh, okay. So, do we, we've completed our hearing list, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. So, with that, we'll close our public hearing, and we will move to a board discussion. And Commissioner Smith, you are recognized.
Thank you. And could I ask staff to put up that last slide again about the timeliness proposed addition to bring that WVR2 in line with the RP2 timeliness? I've passed this out to the board members that are here, and I have asked the attorney to email that to the board members that aren't here. But as you can see, what I'm, have been working with staff for some time now on making this consistent and parallel in the WVR2 to what it is in the RP2. As was indicated by staff, everything is the same in RP2 and WVR2 through the first three bullets. The idea is that there will be a check of whether or not development meets these timeliness indicators. The issue was that while the RP2 had a bullet number four, the WVR2 was lacking any bullet number four. So, this is our work now with staff, with the attorneys, to craft something that would be bullet number four for WVR2, to provide trip capture bullet for timeliness. It's certainly just as important in WVR2 and Wyomama to continue attempting to achieve trip capture in this rural area as it is in the Balm RP2 area. It has been the main point of the RP2 to begin with, that these rural villages would not become bedroom communities full of commuters just leaving, but that they would be villages with the jobs and services contained, and have some kind of trip capture to prevent them from being sprawl, impacts on our roads and other infrastructure. So, that was always the main point of RP2. And then, when the Wyomama community plan kind of adopted all the RP2 that was in their plan area and named it WVR2, they decided that they wanted the trip capture not to be necessarily in each planned village like the RP2, but to focus the development and capture the trip, focus the commercial, and capture the trips in the town center. And so, they had a little divergence there, where Wyomama, WVR2, was going to allow residential development in the rural area that would capture trips in the downtown urban area. And, you know, we've been kind of wrestling with that point, but it's certainly been a goal of the community the entire time. It was a goal of the moratorium to ensure that we were getting trip capture in these areas. And that has been reaffirmed in the work that the community of Wyomama has done in working on this WVR2 and in these, these land use, future land use element in this, during this moratorium time. And you can see, even in the comments tonight and in the memo that Enterprising Latina sent us, that they are prioritizing capturing trips and directing commercial into their town center while the WVR2 develops. And so, this is, this additional text here before you, proposed bullet number four for the WVR2 is the staff work to provide that for WVR2. You can see it's exactly like the bullet number four for RP2, except instead of saying the commercial uses would be within two miles, you remember, we've talked a lot about as the crow flies or as the cow walks or whatever out there of the development, this bullet directs the mix of uses either onsite, okay, do it onsite if you want, or located within two-mile walking or driving distance of the 674 that is within Wyomama Village downtown in the urban service area, or some combination, just like RP2 allows some combination at the end of it, this allows some combination. So, it's the same thing for WVR2 to try to ensure trip capture that is in RP2, but it's crafted for the Wyomama Village community's goal of directing these additional uses to their town center. And then, there's little asterisks added for WVR2 that would allow them to provide this essentially through one of the community benefits, which allows them to construct things on State Road 674. So, with, I would like to move that we adopt this bullet number four for WVR2 as it is in RP2, but tailored and thoroughly vetted by the attorneys to get to this point for WVR2.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner White, and I'm looking, I don't think I, Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
I just have a question or two. The RP2 and the WVR2.
Madam Chair. Yeah.
Can I break the phone? Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Sorry about that. Mr. Gormley, in both, in the language on both sides of this, it says the project does not achieve internal trip capture, but it doesn't define how much that is. So, is it just some internal trip capture? In other words, would a daycare use satisfy the need, for example?
Yes, Commissioner, as I read this, there's not a quantified amount at seeking to get that trip capture. So I believe to your question, yes, a daycare almost certainly would meet the trip capture for residential development.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know, but it was the quantity question I'm asking.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to respond that there was some talk about quantifying it, and the result was it would be better to leave it flexible for planning and moving down the line.
And I see no other comments. I'm sorry, I have to move two screens here to check. But I just want to say thank you, Commissioner Smith, for bringing this. I was traveling down the same path, and I think it's a really important element when we've lost the timeliness measurement of jobs and to have restored. Commissioner Cohen, there was always that two mile in the RP2, but it was turned into commercial entitlement instead of real building. And so we had talked about that the last time, and they are using it in a different way, but it's, I think both those elements are very, very important. So I appreciate it coming back. And seeing no further comments, can we have a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith? White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I have what I think would be, should be one of the easier motions we might entertain tonight, and just to kind of get the ball rolling. I think I could wrap this all up in one motion, and that would be to do for WVR2 what we just did for RP2, that those items that passed, I believe unanimously. And so there were three. One was to remove the last sentence of 48.8.7. You'll remember that was the mobility planning. It was in RP2, it was 33.8.7. But it was the sentence that said this review shall not include the consideration of capacity projects external to the project. And we decided that was redundant to have it in our county comp plan since it's already required by state statute. So that's one thing. And then there were two community benefits that we removed, and I believe unanimously, and they happen to also be community benefits that the Wyoma enterprising Latinas have asked to be removed, two of theirs. There are others, but these we already decided for RP2, and that was in WVR2, it's the one about green building and the one about schools. So it would be to remove the green building lead benefit that is in WVR2, I believe it is tier two number nine.
Nine.
Uh huh, thank you. And the schools was tier one, number five. So that's my motion, is to remove those two things that we already agreed to remove from RP2 and delete that last sentence on the mobility planning item 48.8.7 that we did for RP2.
Second.
Okay. And we, I see Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, I appreciate it. The only question I have is, on the previous presentation, we saw the prioritization, the very first item that was listed as a goal by the community was a school, or was schools. And so, while I frequently, you know, agreed, like in the last conversation we had about it, that, you know, schools isn't necessarily a community benefit to the extent of a very large community that, because we're building, you know, education factories that are the size of, you know, gigantic factories, is the goal here in the schools as this community plan is written, and the overlay is written for a small school that would serve the area with its specifications that are described? Or are we just going to hope that a school gets there? I'm just trying to make sure that if, since the schools was the very first one on the list, which was not in the goal prioritization in RP2, can, you know, what is the fallout or what is the opportunity having that stay versus having it removed from the tier list?
Commissioner Smith would like to respond.
Thank you. And I'm sure we all agree that schools are important, and schools are important in this area. And as, but the reason that we voted to remove this as a community benefit in the community benefits list that could be traded away for 10 times your density in the rural area, we wanted to tighten up that list of trading benefits to things that were really benefits that you wouldn't get otherwise. Whereas, you know, lead building, I love lead, or green building, everybody does, but that is, and certainly schools as well, but really even more so in the case of schools, and the reason that the enterprising Latinas underlined that they wanted that removed is not that they don't like schools or don't care about, schools are prioritized, schools, but it is because they don't think they need to trade that away since what was written there is what has to be done anyway in developing a new development out there. So that wasn't viewed as a trading piece for more density in the rural area, it was viewed as something we're going to have to insist on getting along with residential density in the normal course of development review.
Understood. I just thought it would be wise to have that conversation on the dais with those that were listening, given that it was listed as the first priority in the goal list. So thank you very much for clarifying that and making sure that it was very clear why it was being recommended to move. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much. I want to say at the outset that I'm going to support the motion. I have a couple of questions that are mainly, I just would like to clarify a few things, and like Commissioner Overman just said, make sure that they're clarified on the record. The first is, there's a lot in here that would appear to be the type of things, the community benefits, that are already, that are already part of a developer's responsibility. So what's the difference in terms of what is part of a responsibility now and what would qualify as sort of an added community benefit? And I'm thinking in terms of capital improvements particularly.
So Commissioner, the way that these community benefits are structured is that they are things over and above what the project would otherwise have as a minimum requirement. You know, there are things that may get incorporated, but they're not required. And particularly for the capital piece, if it's, as it relates to the mobility fee alternative satisfaction agreement, that is something that is, that is, will be above and beyond what the project would need to do to build, to accommodate its own impacts and integrate with the surrounding roadways. This would be something more than what the project would need to simply develop. And I think most of these, most of these community benefits are of that nature, that they're things that you, that wouldn't be out of place for development to provide, but they're exceeding what it otherwise would be required to provide.
You know, when I look at this, particularly community benefit number 13, which is sort of a catch-all, it talks about just a contribution towards furthering a defined goal of the community plan within the livable community's element. The enterprising Latinas made the suggestion about what I believe they referred to as a, the committee that was going to, the community-based committee that was going to be interacting with the development community. Who is going to make the decision of whether or not these community benefits are fall into the category of, and I'm talking here about 13, which is the let's be creative category. How is that, how is that process going to actually work?
So ultimately, the decision will be up to the board to make that call. It will be, if this is adopted, it will be, it will come to the board with an analysis from Planning Commission staff, Development Services staff, as to the merits of what is being proposed. You're correct, it is a be creative type of benefit, but ultimately, it will be up to the board to make that decision. There is the community plan that will help guide that decision and put some context for what, you know, those goals are that are sought to be furthered, and ultimately, it will be the board that makes the final determination of whether that is met.
Okay. And then I have one more question, and that is just, I want to-
Can I just do a little clarification?
Sure.
Because you were saying 13, but 13 was additional landscaping. I think you meant 14 as the kind of-
Well, yeah, I meant, yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to-
Yes, I meant the catch-all exception.
Right, that's what I thought, okay.
You know, and then the final thing, I just wanted to make sure, because this came up last week, and I just wanted to reiterate it this week. A public benefit has to be publicly assessable. So open space and recreational uses that would be termed a community benefit are going to be open to the whole community, correct?
Yes, I believe where it's talking about parks or recreational facilities, those are things that would be open to the community as opposed to the, say, a private community amenity.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want clarification on page 29 regarding the new development as a community benefit, but it says the development of 50 or more units are going to have one meeting, one community meeting, and I believe in should, they should at least have two meetings because they cannot resolve everything in one meeting. Even for us, we have two public meetings. You know, so you're just giving them one meeting, and so I would like for the Planning Commission to revisit this for more meetings for the plan before it's submitted.
Okay, I don't know if the-
This is Melissa Zornita. We'd be happy to take a look at the, not only the number of meetings, but the threshold in which the meetings are required. Right now, it says for 50 residential units or more. We've had some discussions with the county administration about looking at the best way to most effectively hold those community meetings related to the community benefits. So we would be happy, before your October hearing, to bring back some revisions in that regard.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I see no other comments with regards to what is before us, which is removing numbers 5, 9, and 48. Is it A7, the last sentence, all parallel actions that we took with regards to RP2? It's a motion that was made by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner White, is that? Yeah. And with that, if we can please have a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. I do not see anyone else, is anyone wishing to speak at this time? We finished? If, Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
I'm sorry, I have a really quick question. You know, at the beginning of this, of the documentation that we received, early on, the Planning Commission actually provided a support letter for the idea of the task force, as it's described, implementing task force. I'd like to at least have a brief discussion of what, how that structure, how that implementation would operate, so that there is no misunderstanding of how that actually can operate within the law, as well as within our process, so that the community feels as they have all the responsibilities that they would like to have in this process as they work through, working with projects as it pertains to community benefits. Could someone elaborate on what that would look like with the community that has worked so hard to get here?
I'm not sure who would like to respond to that. Would you, Ms. Zornita?
Well, I think we've had some discussions with Mr. Hordell and Mr. Gormley about some different approaches to configurations for that. I certainly think there are some things that you all will want to consider about whether or not, what the composition of the group is, whether or not it's something that has to be governed by the sunshine, things of that nature. The Planning Commission's support was, you know, they heard a lot of testimony from the community about wanting to have that further continuity on implementation, and wanted to make sure that was conveyed to you all, that the Planning Commission supported that. I think they'd want me to say that as an agency, we would happily support that group in whatever is the appropriate function. But I don't, I don't know if, whether either the county administration or county attorney's office would like to add anything about the potential future structure of that.
Is there anyone who would like to add?
I'll just add on to what Ms. Zornita said, is I think that the concept is something that we have talked about, is something to help support the integration of the community into the planning and development process, as well as other potential points of advocacy for the community. I think the details of how that committee would work and how it would structure are still being considered. So, you know, it's a good question, and we're intending to come back with some structure that we can recommend to the board on how such a group could operate and what their roles would be.
Okay. And I'll just jump in at this point, too, because I've been in touch and talked with the Wyoma community at some length about this, as well as administration, with Ms. Wise, Mr. Hordell, and some possibilities and plans in the future. But I'll say, I have felt that there, you know, we are about one of the largest unincorporated areas in America, and we have all these communities that anyplace else, think of Pinellas County, Broward, Orange, anyplace you want to think about, there's just many more incorporated communities, and they have their own governments, like Plant City or Temple Terrace, that, you know, there's some representation, can really have some determination in their plans. And we have our community groups, but I've really thought- But I've really thought, and I was involved in this also as I was in aid for Commissioner Castor back in 2003, 2004, 2005, '06. And, you know, I've really thought we needed some, we have kind of, they talk about the missing middle in housing. I feel like we have the missing middle in community engagement and a back and forth to make visions happen. And I've talked a lot about the kind of disconnect between our plans, or, you know, the things that we put forward and that the community expresses all this, you know, passion and desire for, but I feel like there's no really mechanism to do that. So, I'm just going to say that I've talked a bit, and I asked for some language, and the suggestion was that we add this to the strategic plan, not within the comprehensive plan or the LDC. And I think there can be open discussion about how to actualize this in the future. And I feel like we might be able to create a model. I know the BOM communities already expressed interest in this when they heard Wy Mama was, brought this to the Planning Commission. And so, I would, I just have a bare sentence, and I really feel like, you know, this, this is just something new that we, that I'd like to see happening more and more, to have the county engage with different communities, because we have this massive need, and, you know, I'm not sure exactly how this will go, but it was suggested that we add in language with the heading Wy Mama Community, and just sim, this is very simple. Shelby involved in, on an ongoing basis with the county and other community partners as the community plan is implementing and is implemented. So, you know, that's pretty simple. I guess if we make a motion to do that, I could pass the-
Second.
Okay. Do, you're making the motion, Commissioner Smith? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And I don't know if we have any further, Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just gonna say, great minds think alike. That was the question I was asking the attorney. And Commissioner Overman read my mind about the task force. So, thank you so much for making sure that this is implemented when we vote in a few minutes. Thank you.
Okay, and it doesn't seem like we have any more comments with regards to this, so if we could have a roll call vote.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. And Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. You know, you had a little confusion about what was 13 and what was 14, and I think the reason is that there's an extra benefit that is not addressed consistently for landscape screening. So, the flu, the future land use element has 14 benefits, but the Land Development Code has only 13. The extra benefit in the future land use element kicks what was number 13 into number 14, and that was the confusion. So, the extra element that is in the future land use element, number 13, is about landscaping. That is not, wait, have I got that right? Number 13 in the future land use element is, says to, you know, one of the benefits that you could trade away would be if you provide 25% additional landscaping portions of the screening above the minimums found in the Land Development Code. If you provide 25% extra landscaping screening, that could be one of your trading cards to get your density. It's only in the future land use. It's not in the Land Development Code. I'm gonna suggest that we remove it at this point from the future land use, because I, I don't think it's, it's a great trading card. But I also know, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's gonna be a lot easier to add it back in than it would be to take it out later. So, if the community clamors that they want extra landscaping to be a trading chip, they can come tell us at the next hearing, and I'll be the first one to move to put it back in both places. But I think the thing to do tonight, for consistency's sake, is to take it out of the future land use element. And of, I'll, I'll, I wanna make that motion, but I'll ask Mr. Gormly if you had any further explanation about why it was in one place but not another.
I don't, Commissioner. I believe the intent was to have these two consistent. It looks like there's been some, some disconnect between those. So, I don't know that it was intentional that they was, that was in one document and not the other.
If I might, Commissioner, this is Mrs. Zornita. The, I checked with staff, and that was in there actually as an error in trying to make them consistent between RP2 and WVR2. That number 13 in the flu got carried over from the RP2 erroneously. So, yes, 13 in the flu should be removed.
Thank you. I'm gonna make the motion to remove it. I think that would be consistent with some of the comments we've received from the community as well, about wanting to focus these.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner White. And, okay, I think that hand's been taken down. So, I see no other comments at this time. And so, can we move to a roll call vote?
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, I'd like to ask one more thing about Benefit Number 7, Tier 2. And this is Transfer of Development Rights. And I know Commissioner White has really studied this, and, and the community has looked, or the, our, our staff has looked at this quite a bit. But I also see that the enterprising Latinas had some concern about what would happen to the land in the sending area. And they were considering that it should be, you know, nailed down, I think. But their primary concern, I, as I read it, was that the sending area where you're sending your density from, that area, it shouldn't count towards the open space requirement for the development. So, you shouldn't be able to say, well, we're, we're gonna provide 40% open space, and while we're at it, we're gonna send our density from there to the town center. But I would, I would just like to ask if anyone has any thoughts about how that would work. Is it, does it mean somebody could be taking two bites of the apple? Or, or is it in fact a good incentive to do TDR? I'm concerned, because Transfer of Development Rights is really hard to incentivize and motivate. And so, you know, we don't want to make that too restrictive. But at the same time, I wouldn't wanna open up a big loophole that says, oh, your open space, you could just be counting as TDR. And since it was a question raised by the enterprising Latinas, I'd like to get some clarification or discussion on that.
Commissioners, I do not believe that it was our intent that they would be allowed to double dip and count that area that they had sent the development rights for as their open space. Those were intended to be two distinct things. A requirement for 40% open space, and then if it, above and beyond, again, all of the community benefits are intended to be above and beyond the requirements, the, if they then transferred at least 10% of their units, then they, they could get that as a community benefit. But that had to be in addition to the required open space, not as part of it.
If I, if I may follow up, I mean, I'm inclined to make a motion, unless there's, somebody sees something I don't see, that we just add a sentence to, to that benefit, to, or an asterisk or something, that would specify that the TDR sending, Transfer of Development Rights sending area cannot count towards an open space requirement.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion that the TDR sending area cannot count for open space requirements. It's a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner White. And I see no other, Commissioner White, I'm sorry.
I guess technically, both, both of these are to the motion. Number one, I don't think we can be too redundant or too specific, right? Because staff is always looking for as much specificity as possible in terms of what the board desires when we're making these policies. But I'd like to ask Ms. Zornita if either you or one of your staff members can refresh my memory on where, within the downtown area, the receiving zone, the proposed receiving zone is?
Yes, I don't know if Jay would be able to pull up the slide of the downtown, or Taren, one of, one of them. I think that's the easiest way to show you.
And can you also refresh my memory as to whether or not we have a converter built in that would convert residential densities to floor area ratio, or is it just envisioned as residential to residential?
At this time, I believe it's just residential to residential. There is a bonus that one, you know, one unit that is transferred in from the WVR2 turns into two units in the dark gray area as displayed on the screen. It, yeah, thank you, Jay, for pointing out that the darkest gray is the TDR receiving area.
Very good. Okay, that's my only question.
I just, Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. I, you know, I do agree that it needs to be written in such a way that it is, it would be a minimum of a 10%, transfer of a minimum of 10% of the base density, if the base density is clearly defined. And it looks like the base density is defined in Section 2 on page 3 of the overall document. And so, I agree, it does need to be over and above. But my question relates to, when we don't have any more of that in the receiving zone, then the TDR is not available. Is that my, is that true? As a benefit? So, in other words, we get to a place where the density has been met in the gray zone with the surrounding area? What is our, you know, for example, what is our maximum capacity on the TDR receiving zone? You know, based on the specs of having at least 40% of the gross site area open space to ensure that the rural landscape is preserved? I mean, that's the first criteria. And then there's two other additional criterias. So, once all of that's met, then the TDR strategy for a development to look for transfer of additional density to a receiving zone, that's over and above, correct?
This is the, the one receiving zone that is identified, but by no means does this have to be the last receiving zone to ever be identified by Hillsborough County.
Oh, I, I agree, but my point is, is it only gonna go into that one for this particular area or for this particular plan? Because transferring it to Luks, or Thanana Sasa, or somewhere else is, is not, I'm not sure that was the intent of the language. And so, I, I would suggest that in this language, it does say receiving zone in Wy Mama, but then there's a certain amount of capacity of that, you know, of that receiving ship, I guess, that would then cause, you know, that option to no longer be available. Is that, is that a possibility here?
There would be a ceiling, yes, for that specific area, by all means.
Okay, because we've run into ceilings before. They're so much fun, and that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner, as a community benefit, 100%, there could be a ceiling involved in that. For a TDR program, no. Obviously, the county can work to find other places to put that. Mr. Gormly could speak more to that issue, but obviously, one can find other areas to put WVR2 TDRs.
I, I do agree, but at this point, it specifically identifies Wy Mama Downtown. So, in this case, this community benefit is strictly for the Wy Mama Downtown area as a receiving zone, until it's modified in the future, once we hit that capacity limit. Is that your understanding? My understanding, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you. That's what I needed.
Just a point of clarification, as I understand it, because I'm, I mean, I've looked at this a lot. And it says, the T, the transfer of a minimum of 10% of the base density of the total PD units per an acre to the receiving zone in Wy Mama Downtown per Section 3.2411, and/or other TDR receiving areas as defined by Hillsborough County. And when I had asked about this, actually, I had kind of a opposite concern. But what I was told that the, that they very narrowly have scoped out the downtown, because that was really the idea, is to get that downtown kind of started. But, and I'll just ask this, at any time, if we wanted to, like, if the, for instance, downtown area was built out as, and it's been narrowly scoped intentionally, and as a good, as a good thing, is, we can just expand the receiving area in and around Wy Mama, if that would be a desire. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner, the way it's written, it doesn't, it provides the opportunity to identify other areas in the future, and it doesn't, there's latitude in where those areas would, would, could be. Could be in Wy Mama, could be another area. It's, it's, the way it's written, it's including that as an option to continue the community benefit, to transfer them to such other areas as may be designated in the future, and it would come through this board to, for those future designations of receiving areas.
And as long as we're talking about this, I was going to bring this up in a separate conversation, but, and I talked to Mr. Gormly earlier today about this. Overall, I've had a concern for four years in the county that we would make agreements in our zoning, and it would be that, you know, a certain area couldn't be developed because it's wetlands, or, or for some other reason, would be a protected area. But in the past, Hillsborough County has not been putting conservation easements over those areas. So then, we come back with a protected wetlands, and there's, you know, the same developer that did it originally 20 or 30 years ago, it was intentionally, as part of that development, agreed that they wouldn't develop that. But there was no conservation easement, no memorialization in a, in a way of protecting that. And so, I've been concerned in, not even just this, but in all our developments, that we don't have that, those conservation easements. And I had spoken with Mr. Gormly, because we had Berry Bay in Wy Mama that came up some years ago that we were approving. And with the support of the board, I believe it was unanimous, we put a conservation easement over what is now the Bullfrog Creek mitigation area. And we put a conservation easement over it to limit what could be done in that land that was, you know, spoken for in terms of this. And- And so the developer agreed to that, and we now have a conservation easement over, I think, when I checked with you today, it was something like 173 acres that we have because of that. You know, is it here that we would add that language in? Or, you know, if we're just applying it to this? I actually wanted to even go beyond the, we're just talking about the conservation easement, but I certainly, the land that is, you know, traded away here, I'd like to ensure, how would you suggest, that a conservation easement is put over that land?
So Commissioner, in the Berry Bay, and this has been carried forward in this, the conservation easement was put over the land from which units were transferred from the northern, the Bullfrog Creek area to the Berry Bay development. The way that this amendment is structured, a TDR, Transfer Development Rights Sending Area, needs to be covered by a conservation easement for that area being sent. So that is accommodated in the plan language and the code as it's currently drafted for the TDR sending area. So the use of the community benefit provision to transfer development rights, that sending area would need to be encumbered with a conservation easement as part of that transfer of development rights.
And at this time, too, I won't, but I won't be bringing this forward, but I do want to look at that, and perhaps next month will be the time, with the open space requirements, that also a conservation easement is put over those, because 30% of a development is quite a large place, and there's been a commitment made to do that. And I'd like to make sure that that in the future doesn't follow the path that so much of Hillsborough County has followed by not exercising conservation easements. But at this time, I think this discussion is...
Could I have a follow-up to kind of go back to the question?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
You're recognized.
Thank you, thank you. So, as I mentioned, we could hit capacity, but we won't if it's not a prioritization. Is there, is there a recommend... is there willingness to actually suggest that the receiving zone in the Wy Mama Downtown per Section 3.24.11 be prioritized to capacity prior to going to other areas in order to fill that first? So it's a priority to fill the Wy Mama area first? Because it clearly is a goal of the community, or it wouldn't be in there. So, but if it's permitted to go there or anywhere else, they could be transferred to some other part of the county in the event that the other part of the county really wants those, that density. So I'd like to see if there's... I mean, I don't know the language according to land code, but I would like to make a motion that it, that item Tier 2.7, when it references the receiving zone...
We have a motion on the floor right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right, I'll wait then.
Okay. And did anyone else want to speak at this time? Okay, so we have a motion with regards to the transfer of development rights to ensure... Would you just restate? I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. The motion was just to add a sentence to that number seven that would, about Transfer Development Rights, that would say, "The sending area cannot count towards the open space." I've lost the exact...
That's okay, I think that suffices to remind us. And it's by Commissioner Smith, and seconded by Commissioner...
Here it is. The TDR sending area cannot count towards the open space requirement.
Okay, okay, okay. And with that, I see no further discussion. If we can please have a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0.
And Commissioner Overman, I believe you want it to be recognized?
Yes, please. And so I'd like to offer a motion to modify seven with the previous changes included, to reference a prioritization of the receiving zone of the Wy Mama Downtown area prior to the language that talks about TDR receiving areas as defined by Hillsborough County. So that it goes there first until it's met its capacity level before it moves to other areas of the county. I don't know exactly how to write that in land development code language, but I... are we able to understand the intent? Okay, that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman to prioritize or to the downtown Wy Mama area?
That the receiving zone, that the receiving zone of the Wy Mama Downtown, per the section referenced in Item 7, be reached capacity before other areas are considered in Hillsborough County.
Do we have a second? Sir, a second? I think it dies for lack of a second, Commissioner Overman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And is, at this time, are there any more? Okay, I actually have a few. So I'm going to pass the gavel, and these are pretty much at the request of the Wy Mama community. Part of it was the information that they sent. And I think it's really important to tie down these community benefits much more tightly so that the community is, has better choices based on what, you know, what they have prioritized. And this is all information that you all received, or that, you know, I had received from the community in terms of what they wanted to emphasize or not emphasize. Some of them have been done today, but I'll do the first one. I'll just go through several here. The first is remove Benefit 1, the six building types. They already, and it keeps at original 60% of one building type. And they've already got that with four different building types. It's so de minimis that I actually, when it comes time, I want to change the original land development code to only 40%, because I think 60% sameness is just something that, you know, I don't want to entertain in the community, but that's not what's before us tonight. I'd just like to remove that as a fairly meaningless Tier 1 benefit, because I'd really like to make sure that the community gets good benefits that are...
Second.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm not sharing. Commissioner?
So we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by, I believe it was Myers.
Yes, it was Commissioner Myers.
On the floor, so, okay, Commissioner Myers? Any discussion? And I don't see any hand raised.
I think Commissioner White, did you want to speak? Oh, no, okay. Anyone else here since...
So the motion is to remove it as a community benefit?
As a, yeah, Tier 1.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, I agree that it should not, it should be a given. I mean, if you're getting 10 times your density in the rural area, and then to just cough up 40-foot wide lots, little gray boxes, all identical, you know, thousand at a time, that's an insult to the, to the community. I think it should just be a requirement, but I will certainly support the motion to remove it as a benefit, but I would, I would then like, hope that we could move it to be a requirement without being a benefit that gets traded away.
Okay.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioner Smith, I believe it would be in order to just make that as a motion to amend right now.
I'll do that. I'll make a motion to amend that in taking it from the community benefits list, we simply put it into whatever place it needs to be in the land development code and the future land use element to be a requirement for developing as RP2 or WVR2 in that area.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, or a substitute motion? Commissioner Smith and a second... Amendment?
How about if I just accept all that?
Okay.
Okay, all right, go back. So, but I did, I did want to comment to the question, or at least the comments that were made. Commissioner Smith, I agree, I wouldn't want to give up the language as it stands anywhere in the plan, because I believe in the, in the reference to the six different building forms, it also offers multiple different types, you know, not just a different style of house, but also, you know, townhomes, duplexes, apartments, a variety of different forms of housing. And that diversity is what I believe I thought I heard the community say. So I will support, I will be supporting the motion.
I have one more question.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized?
Thank you. I just wanted, I know you have, it has four different housing types in the original code, but it also has there, it has 60% of one type, and I really think that's too high. So, you know, I was going to, in a second time, get back to that, because I didn't know about mixing everything like that, but I, so, you know, if I could amend...
Withdraw your motion and start over.
I'll withdraw my motion and say that we remove this from the tiers, that we amend the original code that we have to reflect six housing types and 40, no more than 40% of one type. That would be my motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner White. Any discussion? I can't see anything other than hands on the screen, so you'll have to speak up.
I think we're, I think we're all discussed out on this one.
Okay, great, awesome. Please take a roll call vote.
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0.
Great, Chair?
Yes, I have another motion I'd like to make regarding, looking at this list. And again, this was all, had come from the Wy Mama community and part of their letter, but that strange sounding acronym, MFASSA, they had heard the discussion that was taking place last week, and they also had asked that this, that's number three, the Mobility Fee Alternate Satisfaction Agreement, again, be removed, and I'm hoping to strengthen and look at benefits that are, will truly benefit them, that they want to go to. And I suppose if anything like that could, could come up, it could come up under, in the future, the catch-all, if there's any need to do anything like that. But I'd like to suggest, or I'd like to move that we, that we remove number three.
A second by Commissioner Kemp?
It was seconded by Commissioners Meyer, Myers, and Smith.
And Smith, okay. Any discussion? I just have one question. Seeing no other questions. Does that mean just move it outside of the tier list and stays in the document as an available tool?
No, it doesn't.
It is already an available tool that the county has through the Mobility Fee Ordinance.
Okay, so, so it does not need to be included in the document in order to be a tool we could consider in the future for this particular area?
Right, it's already a tool.
Excellent, please take a roll call vote.
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
No.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 1. Commissioner Cohen voted no.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to move to, and this is, again, per what they discussed, and per what they saw as their choices in terms of looking at this and strengthening these, these community benefits. I'd like to move Community Benefit 6 to Tier 2. That's construct onsite non-residential uses within the neighborhood center. And they had asked for this, and it's in Tier 1, and it was just too high a priority for something that's so oriented towards a neighborhood and really serves better in Tier 2. And it actually already exists in Tier 2, to my looking at it, and that is something akin to 12, I believe, is a, it's kind of the same language. So I would move 6 to Tier, to, you know, and move 6 to Tier 2, and then remove Benefit 12, which is kind of a redundant benefit in both Tier 1 and Tier 2.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp. I can't hear if there's another...
Commissioner Smith, seconded.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have a motion?
May I ask a question?
Yes, you're recognized, Commissioner Cohen.
What is the difference between Tier 1 and Tier 2? Because the way that I read this document, you choose either or. There's, there's no functional difference between the two.
Commissioner, for projects over a certain size, they have to, if it's greater than 50 acres or equal to less than 100 acres, they have to choose one from Tier 1. And if the project is over 100 acres, they have to choose 2 from Tier 1. So the idea was to try to, particularly in larger projects, ensure that they were picking from this, a smaller list.
So Tier 2, you wouldn't even get to Tier 2 unless you were at a size project that would need for you to have three, three benefits in order to qualify for it. That's when the Tier 2 benefits would kick in.
Yeah, so for, for example, a project that is greater than 50 acres and less than 100, they would have to choose one from Tier 1. They have to do a total of three benefits. So the other two could either be from Tier 1 or from Tier 2.
Well, now wait a second. You, I thought, if it's in the first category, they choose one, they have to choose from Tier 1. If it's, no...
But they have to do a total of three.
Madam, Madam Vice Chair, this is Commissioner White. May I speak?
Is Commissioner, has Commissioner Cohen gotten the answer to his question?
No, but maybe White, Commissioner White will answer it.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. And Ms. Ornita, correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand Commissioner Cohen's question, so we have those first couple of categories. I think the first one is up to 25 acres, then it's 25 to 50 acres, and you have to pick, I believe, one benefit for the first, two benefits for the second. My understanding is that in those two scenarios, it can be from either Tier 1 or Tier 2. Then, once you get to the level beyond that, and you're at 3, at least one has to be from Tier 1. Is that, is that right?
Yes, you're explaining that well.
Yeah, I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me. I may have the categories wrong, but, but in those early categories... I may have the, the categories wrong, but, but in those early categories, before you reach that size threshold, your choice can be from Tier One or Tier Two. Then you start to get to that phase where you have to pick at least one from Tier One and then at least two from Tier One. So Tier, Tier One choices sort of become mandatory at a certain point, that you pick at least one and at least two, but for those smaller pieces of land, you choose from either or. So the distinction is made as you start to get to those larger land sizes. It's kind of a hard thing to explain, but anyway.
Well, it begs the question of moving things from, from one to two actually doesn't necessarily change the likelihood of the, of the benefit being adopted or not.
I, I would say that's probably true for those smaller pieces of land, until you start to get to the level where you have to pick at least one from Tier One and then at least two from Tier One and so on and so forth.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other comments? I have a quick question. So basically, we've, we've pulled so far, we don't have, we pulled two items from Tier One. Do we still have two, four, five and six in Tier One, based on previous actions at this stage?
We do not have five.
Okay, we killed five, so we have one, two, three and Tier One.
I will just say, we don't have six either, but can I just say that I will be trying to move something into Tier One?
Okay, I'm just trying to get clear.
I understand. I know, this is complex.
We're playing Rubik's Cube or which, but, okay, so the motion, could you restate the motion, Commissioner Kemp, just to make sure we're clear?
Uh, yes. Sorry, I forgot where I was here. Let's see the, um, I was removing Six, Item Six, to put into Tier Two and to remove Number Twelve from Tier Two since they basically were the same, stating a little bit different, but basically the same. So it was remove, put Tiers, put Item Six in Tier Two and remove Twelve altogether.
Do I have a second? I couldn't tell.
Yes, you had a, you had a second, it was my motion, I believe, Commissioner Smith.
Smith, I thought so, but I apologize, it's difficult to hear.
Sure.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no further comments or raised hands or hearing anything else, please take a roll call vote.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
I have to ask a question before, I'm sorry. I have to ask another question before I vote on this. So if we take Twelve out completely, okay, how are they going to achieve the trip capture that we imposed earlier if, if we take stuff out that's, that's specifically supposed to be located in the neighborhood center to promote residential support uses?
Can I respond?
Yeah, please.
It's just, we're moving it to Tier Two and, and Twelve is redundant. We're moving Six, Six and Twelve are basically alike, but one's in Tier One and one's in Tier Two. So I'm removing the Tier One and putting it into Tier Two.
I see. So in other words, you're replacing Twelve with Six and that's that?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize, it just, it's.
I understand.
Thank you.
I got confused about what I was asking for when I was going back.
And I'm sorry, but the, also to clarify, the neighborhood centers are within the each subdivision, that's not the downtown center.
Right. Okay, so I think we.
Can we start over on the roll call then?
Yeah. We'll try a roll call.
Can I, can I ask staff to verify what was just discussed is, is actually accurate based on the planning that was done to this point? Because I believe that's, may still need a little bit of clarification for some of the voters on this.
So that, that is accurate. In addition, I would say there is a requirement of 1.5% of the project to be a neighborhood center. So they're, they're required to set aside space for it. What Number Six does is it requires them to construct it, to build the building. What Number Twelve was going to do, was going to have them add more land than what is already required, which is the 1.5% of their, of their project. So you're removing the benefit of them adding more land than is already required. They will be required to set aside the land for the neighborhood center. If they choose Six, they would be required to build it, construct is the word.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that clarification because I wanted to make the comment, it's in Tier One because it's very important to the community. So I, while I agree that it does need to be in the tier lists, when we only have one, two, three Tier One items remaining on the list, if I counted that correctly, is that accurate at this point, based on the changes we've approved so far? Unless we're moving something from Tier Two up to Tier One, we only have three Tier Ones left. Is that accurate?
We have, just so, we have Number Two and Number Four.
Right. And we're now removing with this motion, Number Six, from the Tier One list.
And.
Which is the one item that does require that not only the onsite non-residential uses, but they actually have to build that usage, that building in the community center. There was no, is there anywhere else in this tiering where the developer is required to build in the neighborhood center?
Well, there's actually, 14 could be that possibility, but the other, there was a lot of expression, and this is what I intend to bring forward, as long as there has been all kinds of emphasis talk, we had a specific plan for constructing new non-residential use in Wyomama Downtown, and I want to move that to Tier One because that was such a strong endorsement, and that is what they've asked for as well. So that's what I would do after this. I would have done it before, but I'm just dealing with this order.
Okay. I, with that, seeing no other questions or comments, please restart the roll call vote. My apologies.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you all for sticking with this. I know this is complicated, but I think it will result in a, a better, better opportunities here. So as I had stated before, I want to move Item Number Ten, construct new non-residential use in Wyomama Downtown Main Street Core, Wyomama Downtown East and so on. I'd like to move Item Ten up to Tier One. Did you hear that? I think there was multiple seconds by Commissioners Cohen and Smith.
Okay, great, thank you very much, because I can't hear anyone on the floor when, at all, except for you. So we have a motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner White.
No, by Commissioners Cohen and Smith.
Cohen and Smith. Any questions or comments? Please take a roll call vote.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I'm just looking, I think we did eliminate 13. Do we eliminate, I was keeping a list here. Okay, we did eliminate 13. And I think it would be worth moving 14 to Tier One as well, as an opportunity. So did you hear that, Commissioner Cohen, seconded that?
I did, except for I'm not finding 14. What, could you read the?
I might be looking at a different list, apparently, because that's where we were talking about the, yeah, so here it is, 14. This is the catch-all, as it's been named. Benefit shall directly or indirectly contribute towards furthering a defined goal within the Wyomama community plan as exhibited by in the livable, livable community's element. This benefit may include economic development, transit, affordable housing, internet access or other contributions.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Before we take the roll call vote, I have a question for staff. This clearly is in here for reasons that may not be evident right now. So if you have, but it's there, so, and considering all of these items, I've had some great interest in seeing in our communities. Lack of internet access in this community is a, is a huge problem, as we have talked about. Lack of transit is a huge problem. Lack of affordable housing is a huge problem. And economic development has been a challenge. So in, in this particular item, there are specific goals that have been elucidated, you know, as, as challenges this community would like for us to focus on. But we're, but the motion is to remove it.
No, 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 the motion is to move it to Tier One, to make it a priority.
My apologies. What I heard was remove it instead of move it, and I think that's a fabulous motion. So please take a roll call vote. I apologize. Technology is so much fun.
Chair Kemp?
Yeah, yes. I guess we.
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Chair Kemp?
Okay, I think I will, well, you know, I'm.
Do you have another one?
I have one more, but I'm just a little, I know I've built Tier One to a place where I think it's very strong and, and good. And I'm just wondering about the, you know, one of the things that the community didn't ask for was more internal recreation and open space, and we've already accommodated that quite a bit, and actually, they'd been willing to have clustering, to have density. And so I just wonder, the internal recreation and open space is not something really that they're prioritizing at all. So I, I guess I can make a motion to remove that.
So we have a motion, is there a second? I can't hear.
Commissioner Smith, second for discussion.
Excellent. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. The question I have, and thank you for, for raising this, didn't I hear earlier tonight that this recreation and open space would have to be public and open to the public if it counts as a community benefit? This is a question for either Melissa Gormley or Adam, Melissa Gormley. Melissa Ornita or Adam Gormley.
Yes, Commissioner, under, under community benefit, for, the, the, if that's the conditions being talked about, the, the park needs to be open to the public.
I thought we were on Number Eleven.
We are.
We're on Number Eleven. So would that, that internal recreation and open space there have to be public?
No. No.
So that's just a benefit to the development itself, not the community at large?
Correct. That is not, that's not a public.
And, and I'll, I'll just say, yeah, my second will stand. I mean, I, I think it is a benefit to the community when we are, when they are clustering to have wider open space in general, even though that's, you know, it's not public, but for a, a benefit that is a little bit of 25% more of the, of the subdivision's own little pocket park, I don't think that's enough of a ben, community benefit to trade for 10 times your density. So my second stands to remove that as a benefit.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah.
Yes, there are. Commissioner Cohen is.
Yeah, so, what if it were open to the public? Would that, would that make it a worthwhile, would it, would it, rather than removing it, maybe it would be better to condition it, that it would, that it would have to be available for public access in order to count? Because, and it's also Tier Two. I, I just wonder if that might satisfy the concern, but encourage the open space at the same time. I could offer that as an amendment, I suppose.
I, I think Commissioner White wants to speak at this moment, too.
Okay, Commissioner White, you're recognized. But, well, do I, would you like to comment regarding the, the motion or the amendment?
The, the, well, is there a second to the amendment?
Yes, Commissioner Smith.
You seconded the, I don't think we really technically have an amendment on the floor yet.
Okay. Would you like to comment, please?
I, I, I would. I would just say that if we can, condition it, that it, that it must be open to the public, I guess I'm going to look to Mr. Gormley or Ms. Lundgren on this one. That would, that would, if, if a developer chose that as one of their options, that would preclude them from having a gated community or an otherwise private community. Is that right? Unless they were to put the open space outside of the, the gates of the community or whatnot, right?
Yes, if, if it was something that was to be open to the public, there would have to be some ability of, of public access to that.
Okay. I just want to just be careful and just think about the, the big picture, because when you do have a gated community or a, or an otherwise private community, you know, that, that means that the county's generally not on the hook for maintenance of the neighborhood roads and things like that. So we can sometimes see some benefits in that scenario. Now granted, the developers will have many other options to choose from and just may opt to not choose this one, but I do like where Commissioner Cohen is, is headed with this. Maybe instead of just removing it, we could condition it, that there's some sort of, of a public benefit. And by the way, in my humble opinion, a public benefit can be the scenic value of, of the property and the long-range views and whatnot, even if you're not able to physically access it because it's, you know, can only be accessed by members of the community or whatnot. So if we're going to go down that path, you know, I'd like to, that's a tough one, but I'd like to try to address that issue if we do go down that path.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Ms. Ornita, I see you have your hand up. You'd like to offer some guidance or wisdom about where we're going with this. And then I'd like to address the amendment, because I could not tell whether there was a second to the amendment.
There wasn't, there wasn't a second to the amendment at this time.
I'm, I'm going to go ahead and second the amendment for the sake of discussion so that it's on the floor and we can keep, keep talking.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Ornita, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that the, in the Wyomama Village Residential Land Development Code, there is a prohibition for gates. So all of the roads have to be public roads in these communities.
So to the question, if, if there is, this provision remains in Tier Two and it's there, and then it would be open to the public irregardless? I mean, how are you going to close it off if we don't have any gates?
Right. Right. It would be accessible in some fashion to the public because it, obviously, some of it depends on how it's designed and how usable that is to the public. But yes, it would not be closed off by gates or anything.
Okay. Does anyone else have comments regarding the motion?
Commissioner White does, and I do, too, after.
Okay, all right. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Given that gated communities are prohibited elsewhere within the plan, I like Commissioner Cohen's idea. I'm going to leave my second in place and support the motion. A community, I guess, could theoretically gate the land and make it just available to their residents unless we, you know, adopt Commissioner Cohen's motion. So I like it and I'll support it.
Okay. Commissioner Kemp, do you have a comment?
Okay, so under the amendment, for instance, anything that's built in there for, like, if they build tennis courts or pickleball or whatever else, they are going to have to have that open to community access, and they cannot restrict it. And any land in there is going to have to, you know, there can be no restrictions put in them coming into the community.
As the maker of the amendment, I would say my intent would be exactly that, that it be accessible to the public in order to qualify as a benefit.
And I was just, I was just kind of running that by staff again, just, you know, double checking here. So maybe Ms. Sornita? Or Mr. Gormly? I just would like a second confirmation on the record.
Yes, we understand that that is the intent of the motion.
And Commissioner White has something to-
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just thought of one final public policy issue before we vote on this. You know, if you have an HOA or a CDD or a special taxing district or something maintaining that space, the residents might cry foul that they're-
Exactly.
They're paying for it and maintaining it, but yet it's available for just broader public access. So that is, I'd like to ask Mr. Gormly or probably Mr. Gormly to speak to that issue because that, now that I've thought of that, it's maybe given me some second thoughts.
Much like the concept of offering a park that would be open to the public, yes, there would need to be some maintenance to that, and that maintenance cost would be borne, would have to be borne privately, however they structure it for the community.
So Commissioner Cohen, that, now that I've thought of that, because this is all just happening on the fly, that's given me pause.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Why? I mean, if they choose it, I mean, if they choose it and they get a density benefit for it, that's the decision they made. They're going to build a pickleball court and maintain it for the public.
Yeah, I'm thinking more of the end user. So the end user buys a home in the community, and they don't really know that it was born from this, from this county policy, and they move into the community and they're paying either HOA dues or CDD dues, and they're going to start to view that, rightfully so, as their own community park or their own community amenity and, you know, you know, the county park, it's the county that's paying to maintain it. Everybody in this county, you know, pays taxes in some way, shape, or form. But I do want to be careful about having an individual community paying for an amenity that's available for broader public use.
I speak to this, too, Commissioner.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized, and then I do have a comment as well.
So I would like to say, too, again, if someone wants to give more open space, I really like the catch-all, and you could do multiple benefits with the catch-all. So if that's something, I would suggest, too, that it should be located, you know, to the outside, you know, of the, not kind of in the middle of a property. But I do think that you start to get into having issues with this that come back to visit us further down the road as our, you know, as our, something that we did if we were to approve this. So, you know, I can't support it as it is, and again, like you, I'm thinking this through on the fly, so it wasn't something, but I don't think that that would work, and that was my concern, partially as I was dealing with it. But again, I think that the catch-all benefit that allows for, you know, opportunity, if that was so desired, that could be something that you could use multiple times and create something like that. So I'd rather just remove it.
Does anybody else have a comment?
Commissioner White wanted to-
Mr. White?
Commissioner Cohen, I respect you as a public policymaker.
No, no, we're just working through it.
I really like where you were headed with it, but I am going to have to withdraw my second.
I'm going to second it for one more question, if you don't mind.
Well, then you have to turn over the gavel, too, Commissioner White, I guess. But he's already so, I don't know, so maybe-
Well, can I just ask a question before, because I didn't get a chance to before it was-
Sure, you can, but you don't have to second it right now, but you can ask a question.
Okay, let me ask a question. So I'm trying, I do recognize that there is a public cost to properties. I do recognize that with the county oftentimes can agree with a developer or a community to pay for certain services when in a local agreements. I also recognize the large number of county residents that use city recreational services on a regular basis with no barrier to entry. So I do, I do understand that there would need to be some arrangement if it was a public type of purpose that offers the need for maintenance. But it doesn't mean that a CDD couldn't elect to make sure that that's open space or that recreational space is part of what they cherish and are willing to maintain. So I do think it's going to be important to elucidate it if it's, if in fact, it's still available to the public and is part of the developer's plan or the builder's plan to include that in there, and the amenity has to be completed when it's done. Is that the way this works?
Can I just respond for a second?
Well, I'd like to get the staffs to answer to the question I just asked first, please. Is that the way this would work, that it would be initially developed and then have to be within the development plan or the CDD or the, whatever the structure is for the community to develop the maintenance of it over time? Or in agreement with the county to take care of it? I mean, one of the others?
Yes. I mean, in this, in this community benefit, it is envisioned as being a part of the subdivision as opposed to the community to benefit number four, which was a land dedication for a public park. So I do think that is, that is, you're correct in your understanding of it.
Okay, thank you. I'll still offer my second. It may, doesn't sound like it's going to pass, but I'll still offer the second for taking advantage of the amendment.
Then we should probably have Commissioner White, because I just realized she doesn't have a motion or a second at this time, so you should probably be cheering. But I'd just like to be recognized for one more minute, because when you think about, when you think, or when you think about the CDC, CDD, you know, this is coming at the beginning of a development, before you ever have a community in there. So they're not going to be the ones that are making this choice. It's the developer making the choice for them. So anyway, I'd just like to point that out, because, but they will be the ones that will be coming back to the commission should this happen. So just putting that out there.
Understood.
Very good. So I believe I have the gavel now.
You do, thank you. It's very difficult to do remotely.
Thank you. I see no further discussion. I am going to ask the clerk's office to remind me, this is a main motion, correct? Not an amendment, correct?
Amendment.
We're on Commissioner Cohen's amendment, which is now seconded by Commissioner Overman, so I'll ask for a, for a roll call on that motion to amend.
Chair Kemp?
No.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
White?
No.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioners Kemp, Smith, and White voted no.
Okay, so I think you're back to the main motion now, right? Or, because we, well, we left it in with that amendment, so, but I guess we do have to talk about, because I suggested removing it, so I guess we're back to that.
So do we need to vote on the motion to remove it out of the plan entirely or to remove it out of the tier list?
I guess, I guess not, because, I mean, we can consider that a substitute motion in essence, so. With that, I don't think, I hope that I haven't missed anything on my list that's all scribbled off and-
Madam Chair, may I make a point of order?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that the clerk's office is okay with just capturing that last vote as a substitute motion without a motion to reconsider and a revote?
And that was clearly my intent.
Thumbs up, thumbs down from the clerk's office?
All right, I can withdraw my second.
I'm not sure, because we had it labeled as an amendment when we had a vote.
I'm going to, I'm going to move to reconsider the previous vote, and then, and then we will-
Okay, we have a motion.
Once that passes, we can have you withdraw it and redo it as a substitute motion.
A motion for reconsideration by Commissioner White. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Move it along.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner White to reconsider, and seconded by Commissioner Cohen, mostly to correct the record. So if you could do a roll call vote.
Just reconsider the, what we just did.
Yeah, and I'd have to bring up the B O C C rules of order. I think our rules of order allow anyone to make that motion. It's different than Robert's rules. Would you rather Commissioner Cohen make the motion to reconsider?
Yeah, we're just talking whether it has to be the prevailing vote.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to reconsider.
And I'll second it.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner Overman to reconsider. Can you do a roll call vote?
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And so we're back now on Commissioner Cohen's substitute motion.
Okay, so I'm going to make a substitute motion that we, now I'm, now I've lost what community benefit number I was on.
Eleven.
Eleven. That the, that on benefit number 11, that in, that in order to qualify as a Tier Two benefit, the open space shall be open to and accessible to the public.
Second.
Okay, so it's Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner Myers, and seeing no further discussion, since we don't want to get any more confused, if we can have a roll call vote.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Excuse me, may I correct the record on, I'm sorry, I got a little confused there because I want to vote no on that. Do we have to take it again?
Yes.
Oh.
Chair Kemp?
No.
Excuse me one moment. Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Unbelievably, yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioners Kemp and White voted no.
And I do not have other motions to bring up at this time.
Then Chair, the gavel's back to you, please.
Okay. So I'll take it back here, and I'll just see if there's any other motions to be entertained with regard to the passage of these, any other amendments or anything at this time. It looks like there is no one else suggesting anything at this time, so I think the first, do we have a motion then to approve overall? The comprehensive plan amendment, CPA 2012 and CPA 2013?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner White, and seeing no further discussion, please do a roll call.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, and this is the first public hearing on the LDC, so no votes required on that. So we stand adjourned.
Thank you all. Sorry about the sound issues.
That was lickety-split.
Thank you, Chair.